I'd like to welcome each and every one of you here tonight for our August 5th, 2013, City Council Meeting, and we're reconvening from an earlier meeting. At this time, I'd like to call on Sheldon Stevenson, Steve, to lead us with our invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Lord God, we open our hearts and our minds and remember and to feel your presence with us in this meeting that's so important to us. We thank you for your spiritual strength and direction. Dear Lord God, you are the Creator and life giver for the whole universe. You are the Creator and life giver for each of us, Lord. Dear Lord, you have a plan and a meaning for the whole universe. Dear Lord, we thank you that you have a plan and a meaning for each of us. We believe, oh God, that you're working here with us. The meeting will have strong meaning and creativity. With your presence and the leaders, Lord, your life giving vitality to the leaders, they will become what we need, Lord. They'll become wonderful, they'll become great leaders, and helping to make Morganton a great and wonderful place. With your creativity, Lord, and your thoughtfulness running through our minds and our hearts, we expect great things, great things from each of us, great things from the meeting, Lord. It's fun for me to have the officer here tonight. He meant so much to me, Lord. We look to thee, Lord, for your spiritual strength and direction. With this vitality in our lives, with this vitality in the people of our community, the vitality in the spiritual possibilities and the life around us, Lord, Morganton can become a most wonderful, a most beautiful, a most air pure, a most job-filled place ever. Amen.
Thank you, Steve. Introduction of our City Council members on my far right, Dr. Alfred Hamer, Boris Fleming, both City Councilmen, Louie Vina, City Attorney, I'm Mel Cohen, Mayor. Sally Sandy is our, you're our what? You're our City Manager. Sidney Simmons and John Cattrall, City Councilmen. Kelly Russell, Recording Secretary. And Becky Brinkley is interpreting for our deaf community. Again, I want to welcome everyone, and today we have three members of our family of City of Morganton employees that are retiring. And the first one, Barbara, if you'd come to the microphone. Resolution honoring Barbara J. Day, whereas Barbara Day was employed by the City of Morganton as Contract Box Office Assistant at the City of Morganton Municipal Auditorium on January 19th, 2001. Employed as a permanent part-time customer service specialist on July 8th, 2008. Whereas Barbara J. Day has faithfully served the City of Morganton and Morganton City Municipal Auditorium and has given of her time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens for five years. And whereas Barbara J. Day retired from the City of Morganton as Customer Service Specialist of Morganton, North Carolina Municipal Auditorium on July 1st, 2013. Whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Barbara J. Day and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the Mayor present this resolution to Barbara Day, adopted this the 5th day of August, 2013. Mel Cohen, Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Clerk. Make this in the form of motion.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Barbara, I wish you well. And I'm sure knowing Bill Wilson, you'll be glad.
I don't know. I hope so. Just thank you for everybody here at City Hall, Sally Sandy especially, and Bill Wilson at Kama. Thank you.
Resolution honoring J. Ronald George. Ron, if you'll go to either one of them. I'm gonna leave the J. off right now, okay? Whereas J. Ronald George was employed by the City of Morganton as Assistant City Manager on January 3rd, 2005. And whereas Ron George has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Executive Department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for eight years and six months. And whereas Ron George retired from the City of Morganton as Assistant City Manager on July 1, 2013. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of J. Ronald George and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the Mayor present this resolution to Ron George, adopted this the 5th day of August, 2013. Mel Cohen, Mayor, and Sally Sandy, City Clerk, make this in the form of motion, guys. All in favor, say aye. Notice I didn't say any objection.
Okay. You're not gonna kiss me, are you? Mr. Mayor, members of council, Sally, Louie, I do appreciate it very much. Most folks who stand here, and I've seen folks over the years retire talk about the people and the people they'll leave and that they'll miss employees, and certainly I will do that. I've already done that. I think that the city has an excellent group of employees and an excellent group of department heads, and a lot of those are here tonight, and I have enjoyed working with them very much. They are a talented group of people, dedicated and energetic, and I think that the city is very blessed to have them. Your manager's pretty good, too. You all know how much I appreciate her and respect her, and I certainly will miss her. As far as the council is concerned, I appreciate your support over the years and your friendship. You all know I've worked with local elected officials for over 40 years, and I have, I respect and appreciate what you do and what your role is and the, what you have to go through in terms of performing your task. And through your leadership, certainly has contributed to making this city the kind of city that Steve talked about it being. And so I appreciate what you've done and appreciate having the opportunity to work for the city.
Thank you, Ron. And one of our Public Safety Officers is retiring, John JR Head. JR's his nickname, and he won't be with us tonight, but I'm just gonna read the resolution. Whereas John R. JR Head was employed by the City of Morganton as Public Safety Officer in the Public Safety Department on September 17th, 2007. And whereas John R. JR Head has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Public Safety Department, has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for five years and 10 months. And whereas JR Head retired from the City of Morganton as Public Safety Officer in the Public Safety Department on July 1st, 2013. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of JR Head and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the Mayor present this resolution to JR Head, adopted this the 5th day of August, 2013. Mel Cohen, Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Clerk. Make this in the form of motion.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and also consideration of award of service weapon, guys. Make the form of motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye. Sally, your dollar.
My dollar. Not his, mine. Thank you.
Okay. Public advocacy issues and strategies. Let me read, or get to several different items first before I get into the ones here. North Carolina has seen the loss, the passing of one of our great civil rights icons in the state of North Carolina, Attorney Julius Chambers, died last Friday from, was in Charlotte, and he will be sorely missed by all concerned. Let me read a Red, White &amp; Bluegrass Festival letter that I received from a lady in Florida, St. Cloud, Florida. Dear City Council Members, just a belated note to say how much we enjoyed our 10th Annual Red, White &amp; Bluegrass Festival, even if it did get a might bit damp. Without the festival, we never would have discovered your beautiful little city, and we came there by chance. We were in North Carolina at Kitty Hawk, and I put Bluegrass Festival, North Carolina in search. There you were. We have lived in a motor home for eight years and traveled a great deal attending Bluegrass and other music festivals across the United States and Canada. Yours measured up to the best, except for the weather, of course, but I know not even city councils have any control over that. Your Parks and Recreation staff, as well as all the volunteers, performed admirably under some of the most adverse conditions imaginable. They spread hay and assisted visitors and pitched canopies, thank God, and just generally made the entire experience as pleasant as possible. I journal and shoot daily, whatever that means, reaching a large audience. So of course, I journaled about Morganton while we were there, and we wandered around your city admiring the historic buildings and sampling your restaurants and just generally enjoying the pleasant atmosphere. Thank you for the Bluegrass Festival. We hope that you continue to hold it for many years to come so other visitors can discover your wonderful town for themselves. Sincerely, Donna J. Olmstead. And she is from St. Cloud, Florida. 32nd Annual Historic Morganton Festival with Craig Campbell on Friday night and Justin Moore on Saturday night, and Justin Moore has several songs on the country charts as we speak. That'll be the weekend after Labor Day, September, what is that?
Six and seven.
Six and seven. Farmer's Market continues on Saturdays down at the Depot and on Wednesdays on the lot on the corner of Avery and Green. 15th Annual Cycle North Carolina, September 28th through October 5th. Will be coming through Morganton, North Carolina, and it will be, will be on the 29th, it'll be at the College Street Recreation Center. So all those interested in cycling, Rob Gage will be there, I'm sure, seeing all the people riding for Cycle North Carolina, and that is the 15th Annual. Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Sally, you want to read it, or you want me to? I'll read it.
Either way.
All right.
Want me to do it?
Karen, you want to stand up and take vows? Dear Ms. Sandy, we're pleased to notify you and your comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2012 qualifies for Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. Certificate of Achievement plaque will be shipped to Karen Duncan, Finance Director, under separate cover in about eight weeks. We hope that you'll arrange for a formal presentation of the certificate and award of financial reporting achievement and that the appropriate publicity will be given to this noble achievement. A sample news release is enclosed to assist with this effort. In addition, details of recent recipients of the Certificate of Achievement and other information about certificate program results are available in the awards program area of our website. We hope that your example will encourage other government officials in their efforts to achieve and maintain an appropriate standard of excellence in financial reporting. Karen, congratulations. We are very proud of you and your department. Certificate of Appreciation for the North Carolina Plumbing Inspectors. Now, I'm not gonna read that one, but Mike Crots is, who is our lead inspector, is President-Elect of the North Carolina Plumbing Association, and we're very proud of Mike. Mike works very hard, and we hardly ever see Mike now because he's, I believe, gonna be an employee of Morganton Heights.
Morganton Heights, Chauvinson.
North Carolina Department of Labor Awards, and you're here. Andy, you're welcome to come up.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. I'm here to present the awards that the city received back in May. I submitted the applications in January to the North Carolina Department of Labor to receive the awards. We have received 12 awards, nine gold awards, three silver. To receive the awards, you have to be 50% below the industry rate and days away from work and restricted duty days. The departments that received them, silver award was to the Recreation Department, to Cemetery and Grounds, and to the Administrative Departments. There were gold awards for the Street Department, the wastewater treatment plant, the water plant, which received their 14th consecutive year of gold award, the Electric Department, the Distribution and Collection, Development Design, Compass Cable was their fourth consecutive year gold, the Kama received their first year gold, and the Sanitation Department received their first year gold. Gentlemen.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it very much. Okay. Chief? Chief here? No, the DARE program?
Major.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Officer Captain Bradshaw, and this is Officer Belanger, and Chief just wanted to, for us to give you an update on our annual Operation Safe Haven, which is our annual summer camp that we hold every year. This year's camp was held July 22nd through the 26th, and this was actually our 18th annual summer camp. And this year we had 53 campers, which was one of the largest camps we've had in several years. We do a variety of things throughout the week. We took this group to Carol winds. We went to Grandfather's Mountain for a trip there. We also, for our first year, we went to Damascus, Virginia and took a bike ride on the Virginia Creepers Trail. That was a lot of fun. But we do a lot of fun things, but we also incorporate some programs and some activities throughout the week. This year, our theme was focusing on bullying prevention. Bullying continues to be a problem in our schools, so we had several presentations on that to include cyberbullying with the popularity of social media and Facebook. That's an emerging problem that we see that spills over into our schools, so we focused on that throughout the week. Now, this camp is free to all our campers, it always has been, so we do ask on Fridays of each camp that they do a little bit of community service to pay back for their week of activities. So this year, we had groups at the Outreach Center doing activities. We had a group at Habitat Restore, as well as the Mission Station. And then, I'm sorry, Grace Ridge as well. Yes, Grace Ridge. And on Friday evening, we conclude the camp with a banquet for the campers and their families as well. And as I mentioned, the camp is free to all our campers, so we do obviously incur some cost. And I want to thank the Mayor and Council, and as well as Sally, for your continued support for that DARE line item that's in our public safety operating budget. That funds our activities throughout the school year, but also does help to fund our DARE camp as well. So thank you for your continued support for that. And Officer Belanger, I'd say a few words about some of our other help that we had this year.
With that said, I bring the message of DARE into the schools. The departments allowed me to come in contact with every fifth grader we have in the City of Morganton and teach the message to them. Upon completion of the DARE program, they're invited to Operation Safe Haven, and like my captain mentioned, the program is definitely, nothing brings a group of officers and children together like going down a roller coaster at 80 miles an hour. You're all the same at that point in time, and that really drives home that you can be, you can have positive role models in your life, no matter where you come from or what background you have. And just very quickly, it's very important that I do mention that these individuals and businesses that do help out with the program as well, because without, not just your support of the city, without these businesses too, the children would not have as many activities and especially good things to eat as they had that week. Hardies on North Green Street each and every year, they actually come to us at one of the TGIFs and said, is your camp coming around? We would like to help again this year. So, you know, I really want to thank Teresa, Betty, and Stafford for donating breakfast, as well as McDonald's on South Sterling Street and McDonald's at the crossroads, they stepped up and helped out as well. Bojangles on Burkemont Avenue helped out with breakfast, also Food Line on Burkemont Avenue. Fats Cafe every year, Brian Miller and his staff really appreciate their help with a dinner. Sharon and your staff as well, you folks did a fantastic job for our reception banquet at the Community House for all those families. Also, other folks, Gary Lindhart and his staff with the Morganton Parks and Recreation for their facilities to use as kind of like a base, also some transportation that they provided or helped us with, too. Also, several private individuals that have helped out through the year and said, you know, I don't wish to, you know, I don't want any recognition, but here's a donation and we would like to help out with your program because it's meant so much to our children. And very quickly, the numerous officers of our agency that have came together to help out with the program, some spouses and other individuals have helped out, too, and taken off time from work to help out with that program. We could not make it possible without them. Crossleek Church and Rutherford College, as well as Morganton Housing Authority, Morganton Parks and Recreation, as I mentioned, and Oak Hill Methodist Church, as well as Western Piedmont Community College. I think it's very important to mention all those, and if you see these individuals and organizations in our community, thank them as much as we appreciate the council for helping this program to come together.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very much.
Point and Pay, Sally.
Point and Pay is the new online payment service that we started using July 1st, 2013. That is something that we had told you about in the spring, we were trying to accomplish. It is a new payment service. You can now go online and pay your bills to the City of Morganton with no charge, as long as you are willing to do that with an e-check, which is an option when you go on the website and choose that. If you choose to do that in another way online, there's a small convenience fee, but much less than the service we used prior to that. Since we started using Point and Pay in July 2012, we processed 166 online payments under the old service. In the month of July, with the new service, 321, and that represented 47, over $47,000 worth of collections. So it seems to be a really good change. We will be sending out bill stuffers in the next few days so that folks can see it as an option and tell them how to do that.
Very good. Very good. North Carolina Municipal Power Agency, number one, Sally.
Could I say one thing?
Yeah, sure.
Prior to that? On August the 20th, which is a Tuesday, at 5:00 PM, the staff will be holding a candidate's information session in this room for all of the candidates who are running for city council seats.
Very good. Municipal Power Agency.
Nothing at this time.
Consideration of change in the city council meeting. I'll make a motion that we change the city council meeting from September 2nd to September 9th due to Labor Day.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Consent agenda, Sally.
Okay, the consent agenda before you tonight includes six individual items that the staff considers to be routine in nature. Would ask that you consider adopting those in one motion unless someone would like an item removed and discussed separately. For those of you at home, those items include minutes from the regular council meeting on June 3rd and the special meeting on June 17th, which was the public hearing on the budget, the tax releases this month in the amount of $10,395.55. A budget amendment for additional funding for the CDBG program. We received $18,000 more dollars from that federal program that we didn't know about when the budget was adopted. The consideration of a resolution adopting the 2012 Local Water Supply Plan, that's an annual process that we do. And then awarding a contract for the demolition of the old Western Piedmont building on the corner of the courthouse lawn to D.H. Griffin in the amount of $28,875. An award of a contract to King's Landscaping and Irrigation to reconstruct that corner and to put down sod and irrigation, $4,800. And finally, to adopt the electric fees required by Senate Bill 3, which passed in 2007, which sets the rate that we are required to charge our electric customers for renewable energy.
Make the motion to the period minute. It is submitted. Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I've got something I want to say.
Yes, sir.
I didn't want it pulled out, anything. But I think, if I'm not mistaken, we set aside in next year's budget $40,000 to take care of some of this dilapidated property, burnt out houses such as that. I'd like to see us get some kind of a criteria where we can put these in order of preference. You know, I don't know, but there's several. I've had people say, you know, you ought to go buy the visibility, you know, ought to be in there. But I'd like to see us get together and put this in, because $40,000, we're gonna, it won't do it. I mean, I've already seen enough to know that we're gonna have to add to it next year, and somebody's gonna think that the property across from them is more important than some other property is, so I think we ought to try to get some kind of a order of preference.
Mr. Anderson's listening to us. Okay. All right, very good. Anything else? Okay. New business. Open up a public hearing on the rezoning of 1.299 acres of property located at 127 West Parker Road from office and institutional to general business submitted by Telco Community Credit Union. Sally.
Okay. The property has been used for commercial and office use for a number of years, and the applicant is interested in the rezoning request to general business, dealing mostly with signage and visibility issues at the site. This has been looked at. Normally, you don't want to do a lot of this because there can be some negative impacts of doing this, but when you look at this particular property, there are very few residences in the vicinity, minimal impacts, not looking at generating additional traffic with that, just basically giving the business the opportunity to have the signage seen and the location seen. The current use and zoning is generally considered a low-impact zone for this. The staff and the planning commission have recommended approval of this request. The public hearing was advertised in the News Herald, July 21st and 28th. The property was posted and first-class mail notices were sent to adjacent property owners.
Okay. We have two motions, gentlemen.
Somebody may want to speak.
Yeah. I'm sorry. If anyone out there would like to talk, address the public hearing. Close the public hearing, and there are two motions.
I move we certify the rezoning request in its conformance with Morganton's adopted Mission 2030 Land Development Plan.
Second. We have the motion, we have a second. Any other discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Second motion.
Move we adopt an ordinance rezoning 1.299 acres of property located at 127 West Parker Road from office and institutional to general business.
Second. Okay, motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Okay. Next item is other business, consideration of selection of an engineering firm for the design and construction administration of the water treatment plant Clear Well Replacement Project. Sally.
You'll recall that we have been working on this project and the planning for it since back in the budget season, looking to replace the two finished water clear wells at the water plant. Had done a preliminary engineering report with McGill and Associates back in the spring. You authorized us to apply to the state revolving loan fund. We are trying to get an interest-free loan from the state in order to do this project. The next stage, the next stage of the project required to continue in getting the funds from the state is to have the design work done for this process. from the state is to have the design work done for this process. There was a statement of qualifications requested from four engineering firms, received those after review, proposed to you that McGill Associates be selected based on their qualifications to do it, and also on the work that they've done with the preliminary engineering report. And the amount for this design work and process for that is $134,300.
I make a motion to approve the contract with McGill Associates Engineering Firm and authorize for engineering services to provide design and construction and loan administration of the water treatment plant Clearwell Replacement Project in the amount of $134,300.
Second.
All right, there's motion second, any other discussion on this item?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to point out that, or ask a question, on the two clear wells that are now, that are up there now, have, we looked at those sufficiently to make sure that they're no longer serviceable and...
We have, and Brad can address that in detail for you.
Yeah, part of the, Brad Boris, Water Resources Director, part of the preliminary engineering report and study was an investigation into the condition of the existing clear wells, and based on our engineer's report, basically said that they have, they're beyond their useful life and that they recommended replacement of those two clear wells.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion second, other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consideration of a contract for annual water tank maintenance, Sally.
You will recall that we have 11 water tanks in our system, and that those tanks require maintenance and upkeep in order to keep them operating efficiently and to meet state guidelines. In the capital improvement budget, you have set aside some dollars over the next several years in order to accomplish this, which is something that has to happen yearly. Recommending to you that we enter into a contract with Utility Service Company, they do this for many water providers, they have taken a preliminary look at the tanks and are recommending that in this year's projects, we do Oak Hill, Grandview, Piney 1, Piney 2, and Astro Drive tanks, and those are the ones that are in the most need of immediate attention. The amount of the contract that first year's maintenance would be $218,000, we have budgeted $263,000 for this.
Very good, okay.
I move to approve and execute water tank maintenance contracts with Utility Service Company in the amount of approximately $218,000.
Second. Have the motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Could we ask Brad to just give the audience a, just a quick overview of what will be done, please?
Yeah, again, Utility Services basically looked at all 11 of our tanks and ranked them in the highest priority order, and these top five tanks, we're looking at a complete rehabilitation of the interior and exterior. This first year, they're basically going to be taking the tanks offline, draining them, removing all the sediment and accumulated solids in the tanks, they're going to do a structural investigation below the water line, make any needed repairs internally, then they're going to completely blast all of the coating, remove all of the excess paint. There's one tank, Oak Hill, has a lot of lead in the paint, so that we're going to have to take some additional preparation to remove that and dispose of it properly. So, at the end of the, at the end of the life cycle of these tanks, we're basically going to have a complete, completely renovated tank, interior and exterior, in this first year for those five tanks.
Great, thank you very much.
Very good. Okay, have a motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consideration of a resolution to apply for North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program grant, Sally.
We have been very successful with the Governor's Highway Safety Program, and Captain Bradshaw, who spoke earlier tonight, is very involved in that and does a fantastic job in getting us these grants. We talked about this also at budget time and looking to getting a dedicated traffic patrol unit, and this is the part of the grant that would fund the equipment part of that grant. And so, we would be talking about equipment for two officers through this program, and the grant that we are actually applying for requires a $15,348 match to $86,972 in grant money. And in order to continue with this process and go forward with that, we need a resolution allowing us to make the application.
So, move. Ever have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion of that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration of entering into a CDBG small business loan agreement with, you might want to pronounce that, owner of Fab Nails and Spa.
We are requesting entering into a small business loan with Ampavon Neva, and this is for a nail salon, and this is part of the continuation of the CDBG money that you have set aside to do small business loans and encourage additional folks and entrepreneurs in the community to hire additional people. The business will occupy 1,400 square feet of space at the newly renovated independent shopping center with Tractor Supply and the Pie Hole and Family Dollar, would have a space that would include two additional workstations in the business, thus allowing them to employ more people. This is in keeping with your Mission 2030 goal of encouraging entrepreneurism and also supporting the small business loans through the CDBG program. This particular loan, there are private funds involved in the business expansion as well as a request for the CDBG money, and the request is for $15,000 in loan money.
A motion to enter into a $15,000 CDBG loan agreement with whoever's name is.
I may have butchered it myself, I'm sorry.
Fab Nails and Spa.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion of it? Did a good try at it, I didn't even try, I'll forget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of appointment to the Burke Development Board of Directors, I'd like to make that appointment. Due to the expiration of a term of Rich DiAgostinos, we're appointing Kathy Bailey in his place with Blue Ridge Healthcare, a term to expire on 2016, and I'll make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The consideration of a appointment of the human rela, to the Human Relations Commission, and that's a mayorial appointment, and I'll appoint Gita Moody, a local citizen at Star Mount Circle.
Second.
We don't need, we don't need a motion on that. Consideration of a lease agreement with Jawara Foundation, Sally.
And I think Louis is going to take this because he has been working with them on that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this is members of the council, as you recall, this has been talked about for some time. Space beyond the outfield fences of softball fields three and four at Catawba Meadows, an area of about 1.25 acres, is where the Jawara Foundation is seeking to create a replica of a 16th-century Native American village as part of their educational and promotional efforts, and they have already done some work on that under a temporary agreement with the city. They would locate, and their hope is to eventually build native structures, replicating a village with a garden area, a palisade, a wooden palisade or wall around it, and some interpretive sites. All the construction operation and maintenance of the proposed, at the site, would be the responsibility of the Jawara Foundation, which would also carry the appropriate liability and other insurance. Because of its location adjoining some of our softball fields, access to the site would be limited to the time and manner agreed to by the city's Parks and Recreation Department. The city has already extended a very minimal service water line to the site, that's the only utility present, it's the only utility they desire. And since there is no separate meter, and it doesn't really make sense to put in one, the city anticipates it would absorb the cost of any water service in the rental. The rental by agreement would be $100 per year, which obviously is minimal, but gains the advantage to the city of having this, what should be a very visible operation from the point of view of the, all the publicity that has recently been enjoyed by Jawara, and we want to enhance that and take advantage of it as well. That rental, however, would be reviewed every three years under the lease. Because this lease is for a term, to be for a term of 10 years, obviously, city council would have to approve it. And I should add, the lease is not, two things, one, the lease is not, the lease area is not subject to any future development plans in Catawba Meadows. Secondly, the, as you may recall, the foundation has inquired before about the possible rental of one of the buildings, existing buildings out at the Catawba Meadows. This does not affect that in any way, the foundation is still interested in exploring that, and there may be future negotiations with the city.
Very good. I make a motion to approve the lease agreement with Exploring Jawara Foundation Incorporated, and the mayor and the city manager, city clerk, to execute it.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, and I will tell you, the public, that this is an outstanding project for this community in Burke County, and if you haven't seen it, you need to go out and see it on weekends before the kids go back to college. We hope on Channel 2 will be doing a 30-minute to an hour production that will go over and over again on our Channel 2, our public access channel. It is something to be proud of, and I look forward to seeing that production. And the people are very easy to work with, by the way.
And Mr. Mayor, my idea, they are planning to begin construction of the buildings, the replicated buildings, quite soon.
And I'm talking mostly, at this point, the production on Channel 2 will be done out at the Berry site on Henderson, Henderson Mill Road, yeah, yeah. All right, I made it in form of a motion, we've got a second.
The Jawara Foundation, it's a nonprofit organization, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Which comes into play the fee for the...
Yeah, and one thing I'll mention to you, it was written up three or four weeks ago in the New York Times and the front page of the Charlotte Observer, tremendous publicity for our county and city. Motion and a second, I got, right?
Yeah, one other thing, Sarasota, Florida picked up that same article, and I was told about that just last week.
Very good, wonderful. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're doing away with the number eight, the Verizon wireless, and then I've got one more.
Yeah, they have asked to postpone that.
Yeah, consideration of the appointment of, to the alcoholic control board, alcoholic beverage control board, and I'll go ahead and read it, okay? The term of current ABC board member Mark Miller expires today. Mark has been an excellent participant, and we hope to reappoint him. I make a motion that we reappoint Mark Miller to that board.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we have appearances, okay. Come to the podium, we have only two names on the list, but you, you come to the...
There are several other than called.
You will come to the, either podium, and state your name and where you reside, and there'll be a three-minute time limit on all comments. First one is Mr. Thurston.
My name's Larry Thurston, I live in Burke County, I've been living in this county for a little over 16 years now.
Can you please give me your address?
3911 Brandy Street, Morganton.
Thank you.
I want to compliment Ms. Russell, she's a real nice lady.
Thank you.
Very respectful, and she's been very nice to me. And I also want to compliment Captain Bradshaw back here, Mark Bradshaw, I've known that man since I was teaching school in Burke County. That man used to come and speak to my kids, to alternative kids, my students, did a great I'm here tonight to speak as an American, as a veteran that served two hitches in the Mayor and city council members, I'm a little concerned about one thing that bothers me. How come you folks don't have a pledge of allegiance to the American flag up here? I've noticed that every time I've been coming to the meeting here. Now, we just got through having a county commission, our county commissioners just got through having a meeting here with the city council and the mayor concerning erection of a monument up here at the old courthouse with the Bill of Rights and the Constitution. Now, there's nothing wrong with what's the, what's on the monument. Oh, I'm a firm believer, getting that out to the people about the Constitution and the Bill of Rights and the Declaration of Independence. Being a former social studies teacher and a civics teacher, I'm for that. But I'm going to bring up something I'm a little concerned about, about that in a minute, but here's the thing about it. Y'all, y'all want that monument up there, how come you can't have a pledge of allegiance to that American flag sitting up there behind you, mayor? That's a big question mark in my mind right now. I've noticed that every time I've come to these meetings. Is it because of political correctness? That's what I'm asking. My, my fellow comrades that died, over 58,000 during the Vietnam crisis, they didn't die for political correctness, if I see it. They didn't sacrifice their lives for political correctness. And the reason why I'm bringing that up, there's a lot of folks out there a little hesitant about having a pledge of allegiance to the American flag because it says, "Under God." Yet you got a man that come in here and have an implication. Now, that's, that's, that's something interesting that needs to be addressed, I think. That American flag, I've seen a lot of people pledge allegiance to that American flag over the years. I used to, when I was, when I was an elementary school kid. Nothing wrong with it. And my, 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 my point is, if anybody has a problem having a pledge of allegiance to the American flag, they need to get out of America and go somewhere else. That's it. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read a statement here and conclude it, from my former president, Ronald Reagan. "Without God, there is no virtue, because there is no prompting of the conscience. Without God, there is a coarsening of society. Without God, democracy will not and cannot long endure. If we ever forget that we are one nation, under God, then we will be a nation gone under." End quote, President Ronald Reagan, August 23rd, 1984. Thank you.
Mr. Gage.
Okay, I have a question, Mr. Mayor, as to whether you, I can plug in my computer and show you a little slideshow, whether it's easy to do, so that it was, so everybody can see it.
Got to talk to somebody that's...
Do you have it on a thumb drive by any chance?
I can put it on the thumb drive.
They've already unplugged the computer and everything from over there. We need to pre-plan that typically.
Yeah. I'll put it on a thumb drive.
Well, the problem is, at this point, is that we've already unplugged the computer, we usually plan that ahead of time if you want to do that, so that we have the equipment set up.
Can we, can you do it, Jim?
Okay, so, thumb drive doesn't help you?
He's...
I thought maybe you could just plug in a CD.
Yeah.
Exactly. Exactly. Okay, I had a ton to speak with the council about the fees at the city pool. I am a faithful member of the city pool. I think it's a great opportunity for the citizens. I've, I've seen Councilman Hamer there quite a lot. He's the only member of the council that I've seen there, so he knows a lot about it. This year, the fees went up quite a bit. And so, on June 7, there was a special meeting notice for the public hearing on the city com, on the city budget. It gave you the, there was a link to the annual budget proposal. There was a city, a news release as well, which I'm showing on the screen, can you see it?
Yeah.
Which also gave a link to the city budget. However, if you went to the city budget, you didn't find anything about the fees. And in fact, the booklet that the city council members got with the city budget in it didn't have anything about the fees. The workshop booklet that the city council members got about the city budget didn't have anything about fees. The city manager did a budget message, and that budget message was 10 or 11 pages long. And here is what it said about, let's see, about the recreation department. That was the only mention of the recreation department in the city manager's budget message. And it actually gave the city, the recreation department, combined them in one sentence with backdoor garbage collection. That was the only mention. It mentioned cable fees, didn't mention anything about the pool fees. Okay, so you go on the website, and you look for the annual budget, and it says "City of Morganton Annual Budget Fiscal Year 2013-2014." And it says "Download City Budget and Fees." You click on that, you get the city budget, you don't get the fees. Not available on the website. Okay? So you do a cer, a, a, a search, and, the, the search, excuse me, you search for the word "schedule," and you get only the schedule of last year's fees. You don't get the schedule of this year's fees. So, the schedule of fees and charges is not on the website anywhere. So the council members don't get it, it's not mentioned in the press release, it's not mentioned in the city manager's budget message, it's not in the booklet, the budget booklet, and it's not on the website. And the only thing about the schedule of fees and charges that's on the website is last year's. And you can download last year's fees, but I already knew what those were because I already paid those. So finally, I'm able to get a copy of the new rate sheet, get it from Jesse at the Rec Center, and he was kind enough to give me this, and here's the new fees. Okay? And that's at the top of this sheet here. Now, you compare those with last year's fees, and I prepared this, this particular chart myself, and you see the increases. The individual city resident goes up 16.67 percent. Family city resident goes up 11.11 percent. The individual senior resident goes up 33 percent. The family senior rate goes up 77.8 percent. The individual non-resident goes up 10 percent. The family non-resident goes up 5 percent. The senior non-resident goes up 25 percent, and the family senior non-resident goes up 66.67 percent. So this is what caught my attention. I call this the soaking the seniors rate chart.
I'm going to have to call your time, Rob. We'd let you run on.
I thought the mayor was chairing this meeting.
I've been asked by him to keep the time, and you're over five minutes now.
All right, you want me to stop?
What do you, tell me where he can get, in other words, you've already gotten them from, from Jesse, right?
I've got the fees. I know what they are. I've paid the fees.
We have the fees, and there's a separate schedule of fees that the council has provided, and the fees that they look at in the budget process. And there's a separate booklet called the Schedule of Fees and Charges.
But it wasn't available on the website.
And it was available to the city council, and available to them, and then available once it was adopted by them. The reason for this increase at this point is, and the Rec Advisory Commission studied these, we compared rates from Morganton, Lenore, Shelby, Valdez, and McDowell County, and I know we've had some emailing back and forth between you and Gary Lindhart about this. In the past, the senior discount and the family discount, it was really taking advantage of two discounts. And in looking at those fees relative to everything else, and a fair charge for that, when the family discount was set up, it was never intended to be a family discount for just seniors. And the senior fee was set up to be 50 percent. So basically, what happened is, last year, you had a family discount and a senior discount to come to $112.50 for two people, like in your case. And this year, the fee for a single senior, which is at a discount, is $100 a year, $8.33 a month.
And the family senior rate has been abolished.
Correct. Because it was never really intended to be that way to start with, when you compare those rates to others, and when you look at the cost of operating the pools. And that gets you the indoor pool, the outdoor pool, and the weight ring.
Yeah, I understand the rationale. I think if you're going to raise the rates on seniors up to 77, 78 percent, you should give the public some prior notice of that. The website was defective in that it did not allow you to download the schedule. The budget message didn't mention it. The, the, the press release didn't mention it. The public didn't get a chance to have any input into this fee increase that went up on the seniors' rates, up to 78 percent. Now, I understand that you've got to pay for a pool. And here's a pool, for example, that's a very nice one, has comparable rates, it's about $20 more than our pool. This one happens to have a warm water and a cool water pool, which is a big advantage, because the lapswimmers want a cool water pool, the seniors want a warm water pool. The pool that we have down there, they do the best they can, but you only have one pool. This is another pool with comparable rates. This is one in Raleigh, and it has comparable rates to ours, and again, a warm water pool and a cold water pool. So...
So the rates are comparable, Rob, right?
The rates, well, the facilities are not comparable, the rates are comparable. The facilities that I pictured here are many, are much better. I don't say that the staff are not nicer, or even more knowledgeable, but the facility itself is much nicer, and a better value for the money. You know, just increasing the cost, just increasing the fees on the pools is not necessarily going to result in increased revenue. Just raising the menu price at the community house is not going to necessarily result in increased menu, in increased revenue. You've got to have people to eat there. You've got to have people that are willing to swim there, that can afford to swim there, in order to increase the revenue. So I think that the, the city needs to balance the increased fees against, what is it going to take to increase the revenue, and to make the facility nicer? Just increasing the fees doesn't increase the revenue.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Before you step down, Rob, can you give me your address, please?
200 Morehead Street.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker, Kelly.
Does he use Omer?
Use this podium over here, please. Oh, he's through, he's through. State your name, where you reside, and three minutes.
Hello, I'm Dr. Aziz Omer, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak once again. My address is 101 Irvingdale Lane, and I'd like to talk about a few things that have happened here in Morganton. I'd like to talk about the function of a mayor, and the main function of the city council and the mayor is to serve their people. That is, to serve the needs and the best interest of the citizens. There's so many soldiers every day who lose their lives fighting for the rights that we are afforded as citizens of the United States. Sadly, this is happening right now as I speak. These soldiers are fighting to defend democracy. We all know that the premise of a democracy is to have a government that represents the needs of the people. Unfortunately, in Morganton, the needs and the best interests of the people are not being represented by our government. There is serious breakdown between the government and its people here. Since I've become more active in our community, as the mayor said that I was lacking to do more work in this community, I thought I would take it upon myself to do that, along with other members as well, and I'm not in it alone, mayor. And I'm not being pushed into doing this either. Since I've become more active in this community, I have countless people approach me and tell me that they want good things for this town, and that we have given up our, given up on our city. Many people are even attempting to sell their homes and move away for better opportunities for themselves and their children. Many people in Morganton tell me they don't want to voice their opinions and don't participate in the government, because no one ever listens to what they have to say. I've found this to be true, as I witnessed this during the three different city council meetings over the past months. Don't take my word for it. Business Insider has named Morganton to be one of the five most miserable cities to live in because of the lack of jobs, depression, the economy, and the lack of home sales, difficulty getting jobs other than minimum wage. Job growth hasn't occurred here in the last 15, 20 years. Walmart is not considered a huge job growth here, or switching people around from everybody to go from one box to another box. And this is, has been based on the fact of the level of hopelessness and what people feel. But you can, don't have to take my word for it, mayor and the city council, you can go to Business Insider and find these stats as well. The city government has refused to be responsive to the citizens. We have a mayor who's been in office for a whopping 28 years, and he's not listening to the people. He simply thinks that he does what is best, and that's that. He has even stated publicly, he'll do whatever he wants to do, and no one can do anything about it. Many people are afraid of the mayor, and will not stand up for their rights. I'm here to raise awareness of the injustice occurring here in our city. At the last two city council meetings, we have had an entire room full of citizens standing room only, who were willing to stand up for their rights. Many of these people stood up and expressed their concerns, and not, and not one of these three considered city council meetings that I've attended have the mayor or the members of city council bothered to respond to the concerns and the questions of the citizens. Citizens have filled this room, there have been record turnouts by people who want to see improvements in this town. These are people who have taken time out of their busy schedules and even lost pay to take part in improving our town. During this time, the citizens have pleaded...
Omer, you're past your time limit.
Well, you've given everybody else five more minutes.
That's why I'm giving you some extra time.
Thank you very much. Anyway, I'd like to get back to the conversation. The citizens have pleaded with the city's leaders to consider the citizens' input, but they are never even given the decency of a response. After everyone has spoken, meetings are quickly adjourned by the mayor, and the problems and issues that are discussed are left unaddressed. By all accounts, it is as though the mayor and the city council are functioning independently of the people. It is apparent that our city's leaders do not believe that we citizens deserve a response to our concerns about the future of our city. I, myself, am here to say that we citizens do deserve answers from our government. Our mayor and city council have been operating for many, many years as though they are dictators of this town. Although under the past mayor's set "rules," quote-unquote, people are allowed to speak for a limited amount of time. This is where the so-called conversation ends. As everyone can see for themselves, there is no real interaction between the city government and its people. It is time that this comes to an end. Watch for yourself on YouTube, this is a very disrespectful attitude by the mayor towards citizens who go against him. I'm here amongst other things to remind our mayor and the city council that they work for us, they're here for us, they are hired by us, and they work for us, we are not here for them. They really do not seem to understand this concept. Over the past several months, many serious issues have been brought to the attention of the city government, but none of those issues have truly been addressed. Some of these include refusing to make a budget cut, but instead raising property taxes to pay for the city's ever-increasing bills. While our property values continue to decline, property taxes were increased again this year in the amount of 5 percent. They were also increased last year...
Omer, you're far exceeding your time limit, there are other people who wish to speak. I would ask you to be respectful of them.
Well, I'm almost finished, I'm almost finished.
Finish your thought, please.
What is in store for us next year? 10 percent? And if our city is so hard-pressed for funds, such as that we have to raise taxes every year and increase electric rates and cable rates, why did we just hire a second assistant city manager at a salary of nearly $100,000-plus benefits? Why do we retain a full-time attorney with a salary of over $90,000-plus benefits? Other cities of our size do not have an assistant city manager, much less a full-time attorney. If we're in such dire straits that we have to increase taxes this year again, why are we remodeling the community house? Why are we having free concerts for less than 100 people downtown on Friday nights, which the majority are coming from out of town when the mayor is asking us to keep our money in town? Why are we having the shows, having shows that are nowhere near the sold-out of Kama? Why are we giving city employees a 2 percent raise, including city officials who are making in excess of $100,000 a year? We had a volunteer committee who sat down with the city staff several years ago and made recommendations on cutting the budget, but it has never been heard from since.
Omer, I'm sorry, you've, you've gone nearly 10 minutes. I've let you go, and I shouldn't have done that.
Who's the next, Kelly?
That's nice.
Mr. Chapman.
Mr. Chapman.
I live at 200 Magnolia Drive, Morganton, North Carolina. I have a little bit of a prepared statement here, I guess, I don't know if I can top that or not, but anyway. I'm a candidate for Morganton City Council, District 3, and I think I'm a candidate for change. I feel that after the recent property tax increase of 5 percent in the city, and more than a 200 percent increase in the utility rate deposit by the city, that maybe new leadership is needed on the Morganton City Council. I'm running as a candidate for the people, by the people, and for the people. I know that it's what it's like to lose a job, because I was become unemployed through no fault of my own at Rex Nord Corporation. I worked there for 20 years, and I lost it because of the plant closed, and I had no choice but to accept unemployment insurance and public assistance until I found another job as a correctional officer at Foothills Correctional Institute, a job that I've held now for nine years, and had to start a new career, forced to start a new career. Our city government has problems that I believe can be fixed. Our city council, I believe, needs new blood, and I feel qualified to serve. But another costly problem, I think, one of the big ones I see is a separate city election that taxpayers, they have foot the bill this October to have it at a different time from normal elections. They pay about roughly $23,000... They pay about roughly $23,000, while all other local elections, including the Burke County Board of Education, takes place on November 5th. If Morganton did the same, we would save more than $21,000 by sharing our election costs with Burke County and spending only about $1,500 on a city election instead of Once again, I'm Nathan Chapman. I live at 200 Magnolia Drive in Morganton, across from Western Piedmont Community College. If elected, I will be accessible and available to all citizens. I will fight for all and not just a few. I will demand open discussion at city council meetings. Not just quick decisions based on alleged phone calls between the mayor and council members before the meetings are even held, which I believe is wrong, and is, I believe, it also is in conflict with North Carolina's open meetings laws. But the public has a right to hear these issues and watch how decisions are made. I am Nathan Chapman, a lifelong resident of Morganton, and I ask for your vote on Tuesday, October 8th. Thank you very much for your time.
Don.
My name is Don Halgan. I live at 411 LaFerrari Drive, Morganton, North Carolina. Mr. Mayor, City Council. I was very taken several weeks ago reading in the News Herald about the controversy that came up about the electric system asking for a deposit for people that had poor or no credit. I further read that the city electric system had been sustaining losses from those people in the amount of $100,000 or $200,000 or $300,000. And I was just astounded that there could be any question that there should be a deposit made in the future. I think that the city electric system should operate as a business, and if it doesn't operate as a business and sustains the losses of that magnitude, that means I, as a city taxpayer, absorb the costs of people that are not creditworthy and that they abuse the system. So I encourage the city and the city electric system to run in a businesslike fashion, and so that those of us that are paying taxes don't absorb the losses from other people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Don. Kelly.
I have no other on the agenda, unless there's anyone else?
Anyone else? Yes, come to the mic up there.
Hello, my name is John Krebs. I live at 143 Beach Street. I wanted to introduce myself, I'm the staff archaeologist for Exploring Jawara, and I just wanted to say thank you for approval of our lease agreement.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you coming. What is the hours of y'all open out at the Berry site?
We're closing up, actually, for the summer right now. So this is going to be our last week out there.
Anyone else? We need adjourn.